Everybody to the City Council. The City Council will hold a public hearing and make the final decision on all matters before the commission other than site plans and subdivision plots unless denials or conditional approvals thereof are appealed. Please contact the city clerk or Development Services Department staff for details on council hearings. Applicant will be given 10 minutes to present the request. Proponents and then opponents from the public are then allowed to speak in that order with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. Applicant will then be allowed five minutes for rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless the individual present or member of the commission requests that the item be removed from consent and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 19, 2022 meeting? Thank you. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And no one is calling in this evening. I will now read the consent agenda items. Number one, a request from Earl J. Crouch for vacation of the southernmost 265 lineal feet of southeast Second Street right-of-way and the southernmost 178 lineal feet of southeast Fourth Street right-of-way south of Scout Avenue in the vicinity of 303 Scott Avenue. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to hear this item tonight? Anyone on the commission? Number one will stay on consent. Number two, a request from Robert Fuller, owner 2513 High Street, for vacation of the easternmost 50 lineal street of the east-west alley right-of-way within the block bounded by Woodland Ave. to the north, High Street to the south, 24th Street to the east, and 28th Street to the west. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to hear this item tonight? Anyone on the commission? Number two will stay on consent. Number three, request from Food Bank of Iowa, represented by Michelle Book, for review and approval of public hearing site plan, Food Bank of Iowa Building Addition, for type two design alternatives for property at 2220 East Seventeenth Street to allow reduction from the required 12% transparency on a street-facing facade to a 4.5% transparency. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to hear this item tonight? Anyone on the commission? Number three will stay on consent. Number four, a request from Cole of Phoenix AZ LLC, represented by Todd Weiss, for review and approval of a third amendment to the Dolls on Ingersoll PUD conceptual plan for property located at 3401 Ingersoll Ave. to allow additional signage on the convenience store, including electronic signs. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to hear this item this evening? Okay, we will move this item to the public hearing. So I have number one, two, and three for consent this evening. Do I have a motion to move consent?
I'll move consent.
Thank you, Todd. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, thank you. And we will move on to the public hearing. We'll start with item number four, which I just read. I think Frank will be presenting this item.
Good evening, Chair, members of the commission. My name is Frank Dunn Young, City Planning Staff. The item in front of us today is located at 3401 Ingersoll Avenue. The request is for review and approval of a third amendment to the Dolls on Ingersoll PUD conceptual plan to allow additional signage on the convenience store, including electronic signage. All right, let's give this another shot. That's not what I wanted to do. My apologies. There must be something wrong with Adobe on. All right, there we are. And so the property, what you see here is the subject property, which contains a Price Chopper grocery store, convenience store, canopy, car wash, and a bank. Here's the grocery store, car wash, there's the canopy, this is the Casey's convenience store, and then there is a bank on the corner. The property is a little over six acres, and it's on the north side of Ingersoll in between 34th and Fifth Street. The property is located along mixed-use corridors surrounded by commercial and residential uses. You can see that some of the commercial that extends there to the west, and then there are mix of commercial residential uses that begin to extend to the east as well. And then there's, behind the PUD itself, there is residential, and that would be to And there are some lovely photos here, but we cannot see them. So I'm going to open up another program to run the slide. It'll just take some adjustment when it comes to the scale of the images. And so this is a view of the property facing west, and so this would be the east wall of the convenience store. You can see off behind, there is a canopy for the fueling islands. Here is another image, more from a southwest angle. And here is a image of the western wall where a sign is proposed. And then here is another view, more from a northeast angle. And so the property is owned PUD Plan Unit Development, and so all the signage requirements specific to this property are within the PUD itself. And specifically, we are looking at the convenience store proposal. I will zoom in on this. And so there is existing signage that is allowed, and it is within the allowances as noted in the PUD. In fact, some of the signage is equal to or less than what the PUD allows. And so in this image, what specifically is being requested is the fuel pricing signage that would be located on the east wall and then along the west wall of the convenience store itself. The signage proposed would include two three-foot by 7.17 foot or 21.51 square feet each LED fuel pricing signs. The size and location of signs would be consistent with signage allowances as earned in the MX-2 use district, which is the predominant classification along the Ingersoll Avenue corridor and surrounding area. Furthermore, the existing signage on the store and car wash are, as I mentioned earlier, equal to or less than what was allowed for the existing PUD. Staff is recommending approval of the third amendment to allow the fuel pricing signage. Based upon the 250-foot notification map, we did not have any comment cards come back. However, we did have a few folks that have made comment outside of that area, and also the neighborhood association has made comment as well. Here are a couple. These are outside of the 250-foot radius. And an email from the Director of the Avenues on Ingersoll Grant. And so she had asked for clarification regarding the signs that were being requested and preference were to have any new signage beyond the building, not a pool sign, for instance. And here are the responses based upon the neighborhood meeting that took place. I'm going to zoom in on that just a little bit. And this is their notification that they had sent out to the neighboring residents. And I believe this is a list of the folks that were contacted. What questions do you have for me?
I'm curious, as I was reading through this, is there a requirement on how bright the LED light can be? I see that in here we identify that the area seems fine, and I assume we're talking about the fuel price signs on the east and west ends, not the Casey's sign will not be lit, I assume. It mentions their LEDs, it mentions area-wise, but is there a brightness requirement? Like if something is like a hyper-bright LED, like those headlights on cars, do we have a restriction on that?
Bert's got to bring up the code.
We've got the standards that would apply to any other electronic sign in the city. So there are regulations on display time, the dwell time, meaning how frequently the numbers can change. But in this instance, they're only displaying prices, so I don't think the display time is going to be an issue for the dwell time. And then the illumination, which, Mr. Everett, I believe is your concern, there are regulations down here on how bright the lights can be.
Just as a follow-up to that, I noticed in one of the letters that I was quickly trying to read, there is a question as to whether or not the lights would turn off when the business was closed during the night. Was that answered?
In the letter, it all asked the applicant to speak to that because it's their communication. But it's indicated that they had spoken with Casey's and there was, that they would be shutting it off on hours that the convenience store is not in operation.
Okay. And then I also saw some words as to being on the fuel canopy as well, but I didn't see any drawings that would indicate that it's also on the fuel canopy, so it's only on the building, is that?
That is correct. Just the two signs on the east and west sides.
So this was a gas station before? Was it Price Chopper's gas station? Where was theirs? Where did they have their price for? They didn't have one?
I don't know that they had it displayed. Much of the signage that's on there is in the same locations, and on the PUD itself, it did not have a signage that showed the pricing itself.
Okay. I didn't know if that was some kind of requirement, but it doesn't sound like it is if they didn't have it.
Of course, they could take those earnings. The earnings are, you know, are something that they could have used and divided those differently, but in front of us, they're requesting the two additional signs to be added on the east and west. Yes?
When the Casey's built a new property on the northwest corner of Merle Hay and Franklin, this was four or five or maybe six years ago now, sometime like that, the request was granted, and on the canopy, there was an electronic sign installed, which had not been included in the application. And it's still there. That's a concern for me. My question is, does the current code actually allow on the building itself this sign? And the other question is, it looks like it's on a parapet above the building itself. Is the parapet existing, or is this going to be constructed?
I believe the sign itself is on the face of the building, both on the east and west facade, so there are no alterations, to my knowledge, that are taking place to the building itself.
So the parapet is already there?
Correct.
And I think the applicant, looks like he'll speak to that when he comes up, correct? Yeah, yeah, thank you. Just not to put you on the spot, Frank. Any other questions? All right, the applicant, thank you, Frank. The applicant will have 10 minutes. Please state your name, address, and you can sign in when you're done speaking.
So I'm Daniel Wilrick with Pell's Design Services, architect, working with Casey's on the project. We're located at 2323 Dixon Street in Des Moines. And yeah, really, all the request is, is to be allowed to put an electronic sign on the building. Signage is already allowed on the building as a part of the PUD, just not the electronic pricing sign. I mean, we could put a non-electronic pricing sign, but Casey's sort of typical approach is to have the electronic signs that they can just, you know, change from a computer rather than having to go out and get somebody on a ladder or whatever to change numbers. So that's really all we're requesting. We're not making any changes to the structure of the building as a part of this. Like I said, the parapets are all there, that building shape is what was built when Dolls originally built it, and then of course Price Chopper took it over, and now Casey's is just taking over the C store, the fuel canopy and the car wash. They are not, I was taking over the grocery store, that's not their business. So the request is, like I said, just the electronic sign on either end of the existing building. So the other question about the signage being turned off at night, that is, I did confirm that with the folks at Casey's, that is their typical protocol with these signs, is really all the exterior signage is turned off. They just have a little bit of sort of emergency and security lighting that stays on at night just for protection, right? So, and I don't believe this is a 24-hour store. Prior to this, there was no, there was no electronic signage on those ends. It was just a sign that said "fuel," and that was it. So real simple signage before, so. And that's what was allowed in the PUD, was just static, non-electronic signage. So like I said, that's just the request, is the ability to add these automatically changing electronic pricing signs on either end of the building. We did have that neighborhood meeting via Zoom, and we had a few people show up, and I think really it was just some fact-finding. Nobody was really opposed to it, just, you know, expressing some thoughts based on the pictures that were shown. You know, that sign on the east that faces the neighborhood was really the one that anybody had some thoughts about, and, you know, with the tree there, I gotta believe that those concerns would be alleviated. For the west side, obviously, we're facing more commercial, so that's probably less of a concern. Nobody really had an issue with the west side. So yeah, there's those elevations. The other signage on the building is already up and, you know, complies with the PUD, so we aren't asking for anything relative to that. So I think that was all the questions that you guys, I kinda came in in the middle of the presentation, so hopefully I hit everything that you were wondering about.
It looks like the Price Chopper signage was quite a bit bigger than the Casey's signage.
Yeah.
Do you have some color to put to that? Like is this signage kind of within the footprint of what was there previously on the Price Chopper?
I believe so. I think Price Chopper just has a bigger logo, it's a longer word, I guess, so.
Yeah.
And you can see on there, the original drawing, the Dolls is probably even a little bit bigger than what Casey's put up, so.
I'm curious, on the tree that is on the east side, who owns that tree? Is that a city tree, or is that your tree? Because it seems to completely block the sign, it almost makes the sign useless. I'm curious, will the tree be chopped down for the sign?
I mean, I can't speak to their intent of that. We never really even talked about the tree when we were looking at the signage on this building, to be honest with you. You know, if that's in the right-of-way, it's a city tree, but it's Casey's responsibility, right? It's kind of the way that works. So I don't know that they have any ideas about removing the tree, or thinning the tree, or doing anything like that. I think they really just want to get their sign up and operate the store, and just sort of be on their way.
Any further questions? All right, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to this item? You can come up, Jim. Please state your name, address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Jim Stavenik. I live at 637 41st Street, and I appreciate the opportunity to be a part of this discussion. As clarification, the tree on the east side would almost completely block that sign, so I'm not putting words in his mouth, but I think the tree would have to be removed if you were to make that sign visible. I am president of the North of Grand Association, which the city of Des Moines recognizes as the official neighborhood association for the area from 31st Street to 42nd Street and from Grand Avenue to I-235. The Casey's store is located within this area. The North of Grand's board consists of members who also live in close proximity to the Ingersoll Corridor and the Casey's store. Des Moines has spent many millions of dollars to create a cutting-edge, new commercial Ingersoll Corridor, identified as a tranquil environment, pedestrian and bike-friendly, traffic-calming street designs, and softened with plantings along both sides of the street. Ingersoll is designed to be the exact opposite of the high-auto-volume commercial streets found in other parts of the metro area. There are no commercial street, there is no commercial street in Des Moines like the Ingersoll Corridor, and that's what makes it special. We have all seen these electronic signs on other metro streets, grabbing at the eyes of drivers as they pass by. That's certainly not the city's vision or environment being created with the Ingersoll Corridor. North of Grand's board is supportive of business, but there's existing building guidelines for the Ingersoll Corridor that serves a purpose for maintaining its unique look and feel. North of Grand's board worked hard to help establish the initial Dolls on Ingersoll PUD conceptual plan, and Casey's amendment proposal is inconsistent with the plan's intent. Casey's has already received changes or compromises that were worked out on the original zoning. They already have signage which is allowed under the current zoning. The North of Grand Board is opposed to electronic signs for the Ingersoll Corridor. This will compromise what the city has worked so hard to achieve. Neither of Casey's electronic signs are necessary and definitely inappropriate across the street from an established residential apartment building. Variances beyond agreed-upon standards are only appropriate if there's a real need, and it's hard to see one here. Those using the Ingersoll Village Center already know where the pumps are. When the Star Gas Station, located further east on Ingersoll, goes away as is currently planned, this Casey's will be the only gas station all the way from 63rd Street to Sherman Hills. And having no competition, Casey's definitely does not need to have aggressive signage beyond what the current zoning allows to compete in the market. They are the only gas game on Ingersoll, and there are other, less abrasive ways to communicate their gas prices to motorists. Any electronic signage, including the ones being proposed by Casey's, is a clear digital precedent that paves the way for further imitators, resulting in a slow erosion of Ingersoll character. Dolls and Price Chopper had operated this gas station for many years without electronic signage, and they've never listed their price. You knew there were gas pumps there. I live real close to that, and they've never had actually what the prices are. People know where the gas station was located, and they came to fill up without knowing prices until they reached the pumps. Said, "I am one of those customers." The North of Grand Board would encourage P&amp;Z to direct Casey's to come back with a non-electronic signage proposal consistent with the existing zoning. Thank you for your time, and thank you for serving our community. Thanks.
Thanks, Jim. It sounds like you might have some questions. Chris?
I got one. So when you're looking at the requirement that's within code, and if they're within the requirement of code, right, during the daytime, they're allowed essentially the brightness of the equivalent of basically two flat-screen TVs, and at nighttime, they're allowed basically the equivalent of a tenth of a flat-screen TV, although it's going to be off, right? If the brightness coming off of just the reflection of the Casey's sign itself is equivalent, is there still a problem? I mean, if you're not going to be brighter than the equivalent of a static sign's reflection, is that a problem? Where does electronic, which can be safely changed as price gases change a lot, where does electronic become safe and appropriate?
I walk by, I do a lot of walking in the neighborhood, and if you're familiar with 31st Street between Grand and Ingersoll, there's a laundromat, gas, and a car wash there. And they've got, what I believe, just eyeballing it, a three-foot by seven-foot sign, and it's lit up. I mean, it's got those bright colors. So I don't know what Casey's is saying. If the picture is a real subtle price of gas on a subtle background so that it's not obnoxious, for lack of a better term, then maybe it's equivalent to what you're asking about just the static sign. I don't know what the end product of Casey's would be, but if the two are equivalent in terms of reflection, et cetera, then I would be, but if the two are equivalent in terms of reflection, et cetera, then I guess I'd have to say that it's an either-or situation, that I'm neutral on the issue. But I haven't seen personally signage in town that isn't on the bright side.
So the example of the 31st and Grand, that electronic sign, is it a suitable lumens for you to say, "That's good"?
No, no, that's, that's really bad. I mean, it's just in-your-face signage. In terms of the colors, and I believe it's a billboard sign, so it shows not just static information like a gas price, but it, it says, "Here's a car, here's a car wash, here's a laundromat." So it's got a rolling, or whatever they call it, different, signing with different pictures. But that would be something that is just very abrasive to the eyes. But again, I can't really answer your question other than, if the two are equivalent, what you were asking, then, then I'd become somewhat indifferent. I think the board would also become somewhat indifferent on it. But we're really going back to the Ingersoll Corridor, and what does it represent? And when you drive up and down there, do you feel like it's different than the rest of the streets in town? I know we've spent a lot of money, the city has, to make it different, and I'd really like to see electronic signs stay out of there. I don't know if this opens up the door for the banks to say, "I want an electric sign, electronic sign so I can advertise my interest rates and other things." So it just becomes another street from a in-your-face advertising. Those are concerns.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jim.
Sure.
Are there any other members of the audience who wish to speak in opposition to this item? Anyone wish to speak in favor or neutral? The applicant will be given five minutes for rebuttal.
Yeah, I guess I was trying to find a, an image of another location that had a similar sign. I wasn't able to do that that quickly. But yeah, really, I mean, this is about Casey's being able to maintain their, their mode of operation with the ability to change the price from, you know, electronically from a computer safely within the building rather than having people have to go outside and climb ladders and change signs with a, you know, an old-school sort of sign where you put the numbers in. And really, I think, you know, without bringing up, being able to bring up a picture, I think, I'm sure a few folks have seen these kinds of signs on Casey's stores and other locations, but, you know, they're, you know, they've got some color to them, so you see them, but they're not, during the day, they're not necessarily any brighter than, you know, the sun out. And at night, like I said, there's a requirement to turn them down, and then we turn them off, they turn them off at night. So, you know, I don't know that we're creating harm to the area by providing these signs. It's a, it's a pretty typical thing that you see in a lot of locations. So, yeah, I don't, I don't know. Yeah, I guess that's really all I could say in rebuttal to that is, it's a, it's a pretty common thing, and it's, it's, you know, Casey's is certainly very interested in provide, I mean, they could provide the same sign with the same colors, and it wouldn't be lit. And, you know, it would look, during the day, I would argue that it might look the same, you know, on a sunny day, as if they had electronic signs. So that's kind of, in the end, it really comes down to that safety thing for them too, I think, the electronic versus a placard-type sign. So any other questions for me?
A question. Off, here.
Oh, down there, okay.
Oftentimes LED signs are dimmable. Do you know if this signage will be dimmable?
You know, I don't know that for sure. I think you could probably explore that if that makes a difference to allowing it.
I was just imagining that if, if we approve the sign and it's dimmable, then potentially concerns from the neighbors could be alleviated if you tune it somewhat to their case.
Yeah, I would imagine Casey's would be open to that versus not being able to do an electronic sign.
My question was along the same lines. I think code requires it to dim to 250 lumens in the evenings.
Okay.
Or at dusk.
So.
So I was just gonna ask us if.
Well, yeah, I mean, obviously, that's what the code says. That's would be, that's what you had just shown, right, Bert, was.
Yeah, I think the code requires it and it does that, then that's a good thing, right?
Yeah. So I guess if that's a requirement, then the answer is they are dimmable. So the question would just be fine-tuning that to make everybody as happy as we can.
Well, just to make sure, clarifying something, because I think the concern is that we have signs that we are allowing, that because of the way we calculate, which is, you know, essentially lumens per square meter in the Nits piece, we end up with these really bright signs, especially for large. This one's interesting because it's just numbers on a large square footage, so you're curious if whether or not you're already dimmer than those. So it's highly likely it's gonna be dimmer than that anyway. But if the restriction says we can't have this brighter than your worst-case reflectivity, or worst-case off the static sign, that seems both reasonable and should address the neighborhood, I would think. So if we, if we know, hey, it reflects off the sign at this amount, this is gonna be, you know, dimmer than that, which is probably gonna be dimmer than code, depending on how you calculate, it's gonna be important, that should be reasonable. And if it's dimmable, that still hits what we're needing. Would something like that be a concern? We said, hey, this won't be brighter than a static sign?
I mean, the only concern would be is if we got to the point where it's so dim you couldn't see it, right? I mean, then it's not providing its function. But, I mean, I think, again, like I said, I would imagine Casey's would be open to working with the brightness of the sign versus not being able to do the sign at all, right? So, and I,
I guess one option would be if the board is, or the commission is inclined to approve it, you could revise the staff recommendation to say any illumination shall be in accordance with the standards in Chapter 134, 5.7, with regards to the illumination. I guess so 5.7.6?
I have a question about that. So what, if you think, like, for example, Jim's scenario on 31st Street, if you think that something might not be meeting that standard, would you report it to city staff?
Yeah, sure. When they're obtaining the sign permit, the zoning inspectors that issue those sign permits will make sure that the specifications of the sign complies with these regulations here. So, and then if Jim or another neighbor would have concerns, they could definitely file a complaint with the zoning enforcement, who would then take a look at it to make sure that the sign is operating in accordance with the approved specification.
Thank you.
Doesn't that hit Jim's issue that I think that if you're looking, especially a sign on FLURE, for example, is another one where that is, again, 5,000 nits is pretty bright. Like, that's, that's a double, that's a double widescreen TV. So you're like coming down the street with like double-bright widescreen TV at you. So the question is, if we have offensive signs that do comply with ordinance, I bet they probably do, what we're saying here is, can we not instead say, "Look, we've got a worst-case illumination study off of a static sign. As long as you're within that, fine. The Casey's red, when the sun hits it, is already pretty bright. As long as you're below the brightness of the worst-case Casey's sign during the day, we seem good. 250 at night, still reasonably bright, it's behind a tree anyway, as long as the tree's still there." You know, but if, I think the concern that Jim has, if I'm understanding Emily's concern as well, is we have offensive signs that meet ordinance. In this PUD, can we make sure the cap is the worst-case illumination of the reflection off of a static sign?
Yeah. You, the commission could make that recommendation. I just, I'm not an expert in lighting, so I wouldn't know what a reasonable number would be. Like, if you're saying maybe the 5,000 Kandelas is too bright, could be something else.
I'm just saying, if we know that we have offensive signs that meet this ordinance, it's probably a little too bright. So the question is, can we actually require a study to say, "Hey, this is how much our static sign puts out"? We'll put out less than that. Because I, I mean, this is just a measurable thing.
Yeah, I think, thinking through that, for me, the challenge is, obviously, the brightness of a sign can be subjective to the person who's viewing it. So we would definitely want to have some sort of finite measurement that says, "Okay, this is the allowed brightness," whatever that is, and yes, we're complying with that, even though somebody thinks it's too bright in their eyes, right? Not trying to offend anybody, but that's just, this is definitely a subjective thing, right? That's how bright something is. I think the other thing to keep, that kind of comes to mind is, I think maybe some of those signs, yeah, they're really big, they got a white background, so they do, I mean, intentionally are really bright to catch your attention. These signs are generally black with either green or red lettering. So, you know, just generally diced on design, they're not going to be as bright as somebody who's got an electronic sign that's just got a white background that's flashing. And these aren't, these are only moving one time a day or whenever, they change the price, right? It's not like a marquee that's scrolling, and the light levels are constantly changing. It's a, yes, it's lit, but it's a static light, right? So, just a couple other things. I mean, if we're gonna go down the path of having a, having a measurement, then I think we need to somehow figure out exactly what that measurement is. So if there is a complaint, it can be measured.
I don't think we have the authority to do that, though. So I don't, we haven't been able to do that.
I would agree. I mean, if we're meaning the code as written, I feel like we should be okay.
Yeah, I don't think we have the authority to change the code, so.
Is the only thing that's gonna be on the sign, the price of fuel? Yeah, I mean, the word, they usually have unleaded and super unleaded, and then the price is typically what it looks like. But like, in the, you know, in 10 years, if we're all driving electric cars and gas doesn't, you don't sell gas anymore, what will that, will the sign say? Like cigarettes? 10 bucks?
That's a good question.
Well, no, not to be flippant, but if I knew it was happening 10 years, I'd probably be in a different place right now. But no. These signs really are made, I mean, the let it, the, the, the words unleaded and super unleaded, I think are static. It's just the number that changes. So they'd have to change the whole sign if it was gonna be something else, and they'd have to go through this process again. They'd have to go through a, a sign permit, right? So the more serious to answer your question. And one other clarifying question for Frank, I think, maybe Bert, but if this were not a PUD and it were just under the zoning that it would be, these would be by right?
The size and the placement would be by right, but if it were to be a digital sign, it technically would have to be on a monument sign. So when staff was looking at this, we realized that, but we thought putting it on the building is probably less of an impact than adding a monument sign, which would add clutter to the Ingersoll Corridor. So we felt that this would probably be the lesser of the two impacts. But typically, yeah, electronic signs are only allowed on monument signs or on billboard signs.
To be clear, though, they'd still have to get approval to put one of those up.
Yeah, they would have to amend the PUD to allow a monument sign for this fuel station.
I think we've all kind of identified that the tree might be at risk here because of this, and the site plan actually requires two trees at this location because the streetscape can't really fit it in the right of way. So I don't think we should just, like, gloss over that. I think we're kind of putting the landscape as intended in the PUD at risk with this approval, at least on the east side. And, I don't know, I mean, maybe even a monument sign at the drive might be a better solution in that way. Because you are talking about, now we're gonna potentially cut down trees on a pedestrian way that's next to a residence and put a sign that's gonna put light into bedrooms on that front edge by use, you know? I mean, this is kind of our job, as far as evaluating a PUD.
Madam Chair, may I ask or make a statement? I think we've gotten a little bit into the weeds on this. Not that the weeds are unimportant, but we're already beginning to discuss, I think, what the commission should be discussing within the commission rather than asking the applicant questions.
Yeah, I can close, I can close the public hearing, and we can have this discussion if, if we prefer. Then you can sit down, sir. So, thank you very much.
I was just gonna say, the tree on the east side, though, is a city street tree, so they can't cut that tree down. It has to stay. They might be able to creatively trim it, maybe, but it's a, if it's a city tree, they wouldn't be able to eliminate it.
It's behind their fence on the site, and there's supposed to be two there, and there's only one. It's.
Yeah, so.
Exactly. Thanks for pointing that out.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bert.
Yep, thank you.
If there's any other questions before I close the public hearing. Okay, we're gonna close it, and if you want to have further discussion, now is the time.
I'll stop, but I think I'm interested in what you guys think.
I guess my first point here is that, I think, there are a lot of bright offensive signs that are going up. I mean, even in places we didn't expect them. I mean, Sherman Hills has got the I. Mordor next to, next to White Sherman, which I don't know how that got through anything. So I guess, I think, while I don't think we have a number, figuring out what the illumination of reflecting off a sign is valuable. Like, making sure here, if we're allowing for something to change from that, making sure it's not more offensive than what we would allow otherwise, seems like it'd make a whole lot of sense. So on that side, I think it would be good for us to strategically identify, okay, what are we actually protecting, right? This is a pretty bright signs we allow, and I think to the point, we shouldn't just be allowing bright signs anywhere. Seeing other gas light signs like this, this doesn't seem like it's gonna be offensive. They can be dimmed, they can be, they can be filtered on the front, but strategically, having us actually have a standard of saying it's not gonna be worse than the other would be something I think we probably should be thinking about than just saying, "Oh, it's under 5,000, 250." That's still really, really bright. That leaves a lot of leeway. So that'd be my only thought on, on the brightness piece. I'm not actually fundamentally opposed to this. I do think having on the east side, it seems odd because you are completely covered unless you cut the tree down or trim the tree very far back. So I don't know that one. I'll let you guys debate that one, but it seems like the tree's gonna go if you allow the east side one.
Madam Chair, the, what Chris says makes perfect sense to me. I think that the, the whole notion of one of these signs, the electronic signs on the, on the east elevation of the building is just not a good idea for many reasons, including the tree, including the streetscape to the, to the east with the neighborhood. I mean, I would be willing to consider perhaps a sign on the west side of the building, but I think to have one on the east side of the building is a mistake.
Thanks, Will. Anyone else?
I think Will's idea is good. I'd make a motion that we approve the electronic sign on the west side of the building and deny the one on the east.
As a friendly amendment, would you include the illumination situation that Bert was talking about to meet code? Or were you thinking about not having an electronic sign there at all?
On the east?
On the west?
On the west, to approve the application for an electronic sign, and on the east to deny.
And Will's saying, with friendly amendment to that is to also add this illumination standard, I mean, which they would just have to do anyway, but.
Illuminate in compliance with Chapter 134, 5.76.
So he accepts your amendment?
Thank you.
I think the public's question is whether or not 136 is excessive. So the question is, is it illumination on the west side that is no greater than the impact of a static sign, which would still need to be calculated? That is a calculable thing. You sit out there, hold a light meter up, and you say, "Okay, it's this amount," and then you make sure that the other one isn't greater than that. That isn't something that is impossible. So we'd be, so I think what the public is saying is 5.76 is not sufficient for preventing offensive signs. If the question is, the static sign was appropriate, they're fine. That bright red Casey's sign, it will, it'll capture the sun, it'll shine brightly. I'd almost be sore surprised if this, this sign is going to be brighter than the reflection off of that red Casey's sign off the south side during the daytime. But if we're saying from a, from a precedent standard, you know what? We're gonna allow this as long as it's not more offensive than the reflection off of the Casey's sign on the south side, that seems like it should be fair and prevent the problem that, that the actual public is talking about. I'm sorry, Frank, sorry. That the North of Grand Association is talking about.
I, I understand what you're saying, and I think that there's some wisdom in it, but I'm not comfortable adding that to the amendment because I'm worried about setting that standard. I don't know that we have the authority in this body. I don't think we do. So I would propose the motion without that change.
Okay, there's a motion, motion on the floor. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, please raise your right hand. I think it passes, right? Did it pass? Oh, and then. Motion carries. Thank you for that lively discussion. I think we have some things to think about here. And thanks to Casey's and to Jim for coming as well. We have one more item this evening, number five, a request from Exodus Group Investments LLC, represented by Jarrett Koenig, for the following property at 1717 East Army Post Road, 1825 East Army Post Road, and 1895 East Army Post Road. A, determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM. B, amend the Plan DSM, future land use classification from business park and medium density residential to industrial use. C, rezone property from EX mixed-use district to I-1 industrial district to allow use of the property for warehouse, wholesale, and distribution equipment and material storage, outdoor fabrication, and production general. Thanks, Bert.
Right, the Chair, members of the Commission, Bert Ross, planning staff for the City of Des Moines. As Emily mentioned, the item is for rezoning in the 17 and 1800 block of East Army Post Road. So it's a pretty significant site located just to the west, I'm sorry, to the east of the intersection with Southeast 14th Street. They have about 1,980 feet of lineal frontage along East Army Post Road. It's zoned EX right now, which would allow for industri, I'm sorry, for warehouse uses, but the building types in EX don't match their desired building heights, so they're, or allow for any limited outdoor storage. So they have requested an I-1 industrial district that would allow for taller warehouses and for some outdoor storage. Great, that's going to give me fits, too. So I have to use the same program Frank did, sorry about this. All right, so as, as you probably know, any rezoning request over five acres in area requires the middle of a large-scale development plan. The large-scale development plans can be approved administratively, but since this is part of a rezoning, we are presenting it to the commission tonight. This next page probably shows it a little bit better. So they're proposing three separate large buildings. These two here to the west would be new, and then on the east end where there's 1825 and 1895 Army Post Road, there's an existing building here that would be significantly expanded with an L-shaped addition. And as I'll get to later in my presentation, there are some zoning violations right now on these two existing parcels here that we're hoping to speed, or help speed up the mitigation of the zoning enforcement through some zoning conditions. So here's some elevations that they've provided that shows what these warehouse structures would look like. You can tell, see that they are proposing some pretty tall warehouses. And as part of the rezoning application, they were required to have the city do a traffic study, and the biggest finding of the traffic study was that there needs to be some limitations on the drive approaches from East Army Post Road. You can see that they're proposing six different drive approaches. The traffic study came back and said there should really only be a total of three drive access points to this site, with two of them lining up to Southeast 16th Street and Southeast 9th Street, when those would be full, full movement intersections. And then the third access point would be a right-in, right-out-only somewhere here near 1825 Army Post Road. So the traffic study is still in the draft form, but in speaking with our engineering staff, they don't believe that that requirement of the traffic study is going to change, or that suggestion from the traffic study. So as you'll see, in our recommendation, we do recommend that the zoning hold them two, no more than three, drive approaches from Army Post Road. I believe they're going to be, I'm trying to make their case for that. But I'd also point out that the large-scale development plan that goes along with this rezoning, in order for staff to approve it, it's going to have to comply with that traffic study, which the traffic study right now is saying no more than three drive approaches. So, again, staff does believe it's a great project. The traffic study shows that the roads can accommodate the traffic that would be generated by this use, but we're just recommending, but the traffic study just, again, limiting it to those three vehicle access points. So our recommendation just has five, we're recommending approval subject to these five conditions. The first being those access points, again, the two full access points being aligned to Southeast 16th Court and Southeast 19th Street, and then the third one being a right-in, right-out only near the intersection, or near the entrance to the existing commercial building at 1825 East Army Post Road. Another zoning condition, that really goes without saying, it's just all outdoor storage within the site shall comply with Chapter 135-8.2.2, which is the section that deals with screening and whatnot for outdoor storage. And we've said, number three, any use on the subject property shall be in accordance with an approved site plan. Again, that goes without saying. And then the last two are intended to address the current zoning violations that have been issued back in February for the two easternmost parcels. And that's just that they need to submit a site plan for approval by July of this year and then obtain approval for that no later than October 31st. And then number five is that they shall bring the site into conformance with that approved site plan by May of next year. These next communications I just wanted to show you are from Corey Boganreif. He's a, he's Principal Traffic Engineer. It's just more rationale for why it's reasonable to limit it to three access points. Again, it really comes down to safety, since East Army Post Road is a high-speed corridor, there's some safety concerns if the, if the proposed use would have those six drive approaches that they would like. And then this email was just confirming that, since the traffic study's still in the draft form, Saroschi had, just wanted to give confirmation that that aspect of the traffic study's not going to change when it's, when it is formally approved by the engineering department. And Corey Boganreif said that it's, he thinks it's okay to include these conditions in the staff report, but he doesn't believe that, that aspect of the traffic study is going to change. So, and then this is just a letter summarizing the neighborhood outreach that was required as part of the rezoning. I'll let Dan report to us if he wants to. And then the consent map, we did not get any cards back in support or opposition. And then, yeah, and then this page here I included just in case the applicant or the commission wanted to see. This is the page taken out of that traffic impact study that talks about access spacing. And then they say that on the corridors such as Southeast, or East Army Post Road, the recommended spacing is a fourth mile, so, and that's for the full access intersections. Again, being aligned with Southeast 16th Court and Southeast 19th Street, that would meet that one-fourth mile spacing. Is there any questions for me?
I got two.
Sure.
So what is the, what's the peak morning trip and peak afternoon trip impacts these driveways? Do we know what that page of the traffic study?
I don't, I don't know.
Do we know if that volume of traffic is sufficient for actually resulting in signage or lighting of these two intersections then? 19th and 16th?
I believe the conclusion of the traffic study was that the proposed development could be adequately served by these two controlled intersections and the third right-in, right-out only.
Oh, so it'd be two controlled intersections, as in there's going to be signage there?
Likely, I don't know if there'd be stoplights or not, but there would be the main entrances from East Army Post.
So a minimum of 250 trips per hour out of each of these driveways? According to MUTCD?
Yeah, I mean, it, the traffic study didn't indicate that was going to be an issue.
Okay.
Any other questions for Bert? Thanks, Bert. Is the applicant present? Oh, okay. You can come up, say your name, address, and you have 10 minutes.
Let me scroll this back to the picture or the site plan. So I'm, again, Daniel Wilrick with Pell's Design Services, working with Exodus Direct to get this rezoning done for their project. And we did read the staff recommendation, or the staff report. We do maybe have a couple of concerns with a couple of the recommendations, a couple of contingencies. Item one, the number of entrances. Yes, we showed six entrances. You know, two of those are existing. That would be this one here and this one here. But we did, you know, in talking with staff, make an effort to align two of our entrances with the existing roads, which, as you could see, results in a slightly tricky approach for tractor-trailers. You know, we, obviously we'll design it to make it work, but, you know, a straight shot would be better, so. But we also wanted to try and separate some of the parking entrances from the truck traffic for the safety of people moving about on the, on the site. So that's part of why, you know, we would advocate for more than just three entrances onto the site. I think, too, if you look at this whole site as 57 acres, if it was developed in a different way, would we be, would that development be restricted to just three access points? I don't know, we never really talked through that, but I got to believe if this was five or six or seven different parcels, maybe it might be, there might be a different discussion about access. I think we'd like to also ask that that contingency be removed because we really didn't have a, we didn't get the opportunity to work through the recommendation with the traffic engineers. Maybe six is too many, but maybe three's not enough. Is there a happy median that we can work to together? We didn't get the chance to do that, and we really think that that is more appropriate during site planning approval process, not rezoning. We still, I mean, you guys know, we still come back to you with our final site plan. This is just a concept to get the discussion going on, on zoning. We have to come back with a final site plan for approval that we'll have to work through all of this stuff with the, with staff and then with you guys in council again. So I think we would like to see that number one component sort of be removed from the recommendation from P&amp;Z, knowing that we can address it during the site plan approval, and giving our team the opportunity to work more with the city's team to, to really, to validate, you know, we're kind of at two extremes, three versus six is the right answer really in the middle. So that would be our, one of our sort of items that we would like to, to talk about. And then numbers four and five, we understand that there's some things happening on those sites. Clearly, the intent is to do work on those sites, but 1825 and 1895, in the scheme of the approach to getting this whole project done, is phase three. We're focusing right now on the building in the middle is phase one. And just with timing, to get through the site plan for 1717, you know, we, we just don't see that having a site plan ready to go for those other two parcels in that timeline is, is adequate, you know? There is intent to do work there. We would be coming back to this body with the site plan on that, assuming the zoning goes through, but probably more likely towards the beginning of next year versus in six weeks or eight weeks or whatever it is. So I guess we would ask that either four and five maybe be, I don't know if they can be taken out, but at least maybe that date be pushed out to, instead of July '22, add six months of that, so maybe it's January of '23 or something out in that range, so. Just push everything back six or 12 months or whatever. So beyond that, we also understand there's going to be some work to do when we come back with our site plan on the building's elevations and a lot of other things. So, you know, that's just part of, of the, of the process, and again, the access, I think, is part of that process as well. So we're excited to, to see these go through. We're really just asking for the rezone approval tonight, and then we can get to work on our site plan and come back to you guys with that, and a little more information and a little more work with the city staff. Any questions for me?
What's your projected peak trips in and peak trips, afternoon peak trips?
We were just trying to remember that, Jared and I. It's in, it, there, it's in the traffic report. I feel like it was something like 50 semis in a day and those same 50 out in the day, so in in the morning and out in the evening, potentially. So it's, it's nowhere near the, I think there were two, two by-the-book standards for studying traffic. It was nowhere near the higher one. It was a little bit closer to the lower one. So that was our truck traffic. Our employee traffic, I think we're talking about potentially a full buildout, right? This is after all buildings are built. Something like, I think it was 400 employees over three shifts. So call it, what would that be, 175 a shift?
So your peaks, basically?
Sixty per, sixty employees per 100,000 square foot of building. It's sort of the way that their operation works for these types of buildings.
So you're roughly at 100-plus per, on your, on your peak hour, when you've got them coming in as a shift and going out as a shift, and you've got theoretically 50 semis going out over the course of 24 hours? Is that right?
No, did you say three, how many semis did you, we have 50.
Fifty.
Fifty, yeah.
Fifty in and 50 out. So the justification for the less, lesser driveways right now is clearly just the quarter-mile separation?
Yeah.
Is that what we're talking about, or is it traffic-based? What was the justification for reducing driveways?
From what I remember reading in the traffic study, just on the basis regardless of access, the feeling was that at full buildout, it would not negatively impact traffic flow on Army Post beyond what would be expected were this built out some other way. So, in other words, you know, this, this, this project is not necessarily causing any infrastructure improvement to Army Post that wasn't already expected by this property being developed. If that makes sense. This, that was developed, I don't, they didn't give specific examples of other types of development that they were considering when they said that. They just, well, I do remember, there was a quote in there somewhere that, that says that this development is not adversely impacting Army Post in a way that's different from some other development on this site. So, you know, we don't need turn lanes just because of this project. If turn lanes are needed, they were going to be needed anyway, when the site was developed by, if it was developed by somebody else, was sort of the way I read that. So I, I guess I don't know where the, the number of access point came into play in the report, other than just this sort of standard of, we want full access every quarter-mile and, you know, maybe we'll give you a right-in, right-out halfway in between. It's sort of the way I, I feel about the way it reads. I don't remember any sort of, I mean, finite data that suggests that that makes the road safer, other than just maybe some experience in, from the traffic engineer. And maybe I'm forgetting something in the report, but, yeah, I don't remember them tying it to, because you have 50 trucks coming in and 100 people coming in, that requires, you only need three entrances. We feel like we need more than that just to, to keep the traffic onto the, and off the site separate for a safety standpoint, because, you know, generally, we'd rather have, not have cars and semis sort of interacting. I know we've got one entrance that does that, but when we don't have to do that, it certainly makes it safer onsite. And I don't think we're necessarily asking for all six of those to be full access. I mean, certainly the two that are crossing the other roads, and maybe if we've got one that aligns with the east side of our middle building, those two being full access would be at a minimum from our standpoint, and if we still get the ones that are for the parking, you know, maybe those can be right-in, right-out. I mean, I think that's part of what we want to work with staff. I mean, I think that's part of what we want to work with staff and engineering on, to sort of work with ideas about how we can sort of meet in the middle, and we just haven't had a chance to do that before this meeting, just because of timing. Everybody's pushing to try, great project, everybody wants to see it done, so we're all pushing hard to get it done. So the traffic study came in middle of last week, we reviewed it, we sent some comments back, and then the staff report came out, and we have this meeting. We just haven't had a chance to sort of get together with staff again and sort of walk through it. And so that's, I mean, that's another reason we'd like to see that be struck from the zoning approval, and, you know, knowing that we'll have to work through it over the next six, eight weeks while we try and get our site plan approval.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yep. Do I need to sign in again?
Yeah, I don't, Bert, that's a question for you.
I was going to grab my notebook.
Does he need, he doesn't need to sign in again, does he?
No.
Yeah. Are there any members of the audience that wish to speak in opposition to this item? Any in favor? Any neutral? All right. Any other questions before I close the public hearing? All right, the public hearing is closed. What do we think?
I guess I don't see making C1 a part of the zoning here since the study isn't even done. We aren't really even sure of the logic. I mean, it seems like we have another shot to make sure this becomes a safe location. I mean, everything else seems to make sense, but the C1, which is we're going to make changes to the number of entries without any data that we know of and without, it sounds like a logic to what the quarter mile fully is, seems sort of premature and sets a bad precedent that we're going to be making traffic decisions without an actually finalized report.
I tend to agree with that, and I also, and maybe I'm missing something, I don't see a lot of concern in pushing out the dates as requested unless someone points out to me why that would, under number four and five, he asked for the dates to be pushed out. Yeah, if you want to answer that, I didn't know if I missed something.
Yeah, I mean, number four and five, we were purposely being aggressive just to make sure they, their toes were held with the fire to get the zoning violations mitigated, but if you wanted to loosen it by a few months, or I don't think staff would strenuously object to that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone want to make a motion?
So if we make a motion that actually moves staff but strikes C1 and removes the dates from four and five, does that get what we're talking about? I guess I didn't understand, we say by a few months, what, how far is a few months relative to what the plan is?
Well, so the dates in our recommendation just say they have to have a site plan prepared and submitted to the city by July 31st, and then have that site plan formally approved by October 31st. Because with the site plan, there's a submittal, and then staff sends out comments, and then applicants can often sit on those comments for several months. So we were wanting to have that second date as a stopgap, just to make sure that they don't submit it by July 31st, but then sit on it for another six or 12 months before resubmitting it for approval. So our recommendation is that there be some sort of date on here just to make sure that they follow through with taking care of the zoning violations. And again, the site plan mentioned in four and five isn't necessarily the site plan for the new warehouse building, which would be 1717 East Army Post Road. This is just submitting a site plan for 1825 and 1895 East Army Post, where they've expanded the existing use to do some truck rentals and some other things that they've never had a site plan for. So again, the site plan mentioned in four and five is not necessarily the large site plan for the entire development. It's just more or less to take care of the existing buildings while the site is awaiting redevelopment. Does that make sense?
So we're in some ways requiring that they comply with what would really be an enforcement action otherwise on four and five in order to actually develop the larger site? Is that the logic?
It's just giving incentive or some, I guess, giving the zoning enforcement some leverage to get the violations mitigated. It's really what four and five are. But you're right, if four and five weren't there, the zoning enforcement would still continue to do their violation, to do their enforcement and would continue to push on them as normal.
Is it normal that we would couple the actions of zoning enforcement with a future development approval?
Yeah, if you remember the last meeting, I think we had the rezoning on East 18th Street, there was some of that in there as well, that they have the site plan prepared in the short term to address some zoning violations going on there.
I guess I would, okay, so my motion, which is open for friendly amendment, would be to move staff but strike C1, four and five, but I'm open to friendly amendment if there's a rationale for bundling enforcement. So my motion is move staff, striking C1, four, five, pending someone else saying they have a strong argument otherwise.
Any amendments? All right, there's a motion on the floor. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And I think that is unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Are there any committee or director's reports? All right, our next meeting is in two weeks. Thanks, everyone.